Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Monday, November 9th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark Baskin and I'm the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Nick Miller. In accordance with the Home Rule Charter, our first order of business will be Mayor William Paduto's 2021 Budget Address. And immediately following, there is a list of legislation for introduction by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill Number 872. Resolution providing for reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase of the Swindle Bridge project and providing for payment of municipal incurred costs not to exceed $770,000, reimbursable at 95% and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred cost not to exceed $1,500. Bill Number 873. Resolution granting unto High Six Associates LP their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install two new projecting signs at 146 Sixth Street in the Second Ward, Sixth Council District. Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 874. Resolution providing for further renewal by the Council of the City of Pittsburgh of a declaration of disaster emergency ratified by Council on March 17th, 2020 to extend the effectiveness of the declaration for 30 additional days, thereby making the declaration effective until December 10th, 2020 in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus. Bill Number 875. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the chief equity officer to enter into an agreement with the American Association of University Women in order to conduct a work-smart training program as part of a pay equity initiative designed to reduce the gender pay gap in Pittsburgh and further providing for the expenditures under the terms of said agreements at a cost not to exceed $39,959. Bill Number 876. Resolution amending Resolution 635 of 2019, which authorized the mayor and the chief equity officer to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract between the City of Pittsburgh and the Government Alliance on Race inequity in order to receive training and develop a racial equity toolkit in order to extend the contract for an additional year and add technical assistance for building and implementing a racial equity toolkit. Bill Number 877. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the chief equity officer to enter into an agreement with ninth party in order to collect and provide this aggregated data related to a pay equity initiative designed to reduce the gender pay gap in Pittsburgh and further providing for the expenditures under the terms of said agreements at a cost not to exceed $10,000. Bill Number 878. Resolution making appropriations to pay the expenses of conducting the public business of the City of Pittsburgh and for meeting the debt charges thereof for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2021. Bill Number 879. Resolution fixing the number of officers and employees of the City of Pittsburgh for the fiscal year 2021 and the rate of compensation thereof and setting maximum levels for designated positions. Bill Number 880. Resolution adopting and approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program. Bill Number 881. Resolution providing for the letting of contracts and for the use of existing contracts for the purchase of materials, supplies, and equipment for city departments and the maintenance, repair, rental, and/or leasing, rehabilitation, renovation, inspection, or servicing of city buildings and facilities, and for any miscellaneous services in and for any city departments and providing for the payment of the cost thereof for the 2021 fiscal year. Bill Number 882. Resolution authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to participate in applicable cooperative purchasing agreements for goods, materials, equipment, supplies, services, professional services, or construction as authorized by the Commonwealth Procurement Code and the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Law for the 2021 fiscal year. Bill Number 883. Resolution authorizing the City Council to approve intra-departmental transfers throughout the 2021 fiscal year. Bill Number 884. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article IX Property Taxes, Chapter 263 Rural Property Tax and Exemption, Section 263.01, Levy and Rate on Lands and Buildings by Fixing the Rate of Taxation for the Year 2021. Bill Number 885. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article IX Property Taxes, Chapter 263 Rural Property Tax and Exemptions, Sections 263.02, Payment Options, Discounts, and Delinquency Penalty so as to set the payment discount and delinquent dates for the 2021 fiscal year. Bill Number 886. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article VII Business Related Taxes, Chapter 245 Earned Income Tax, Section 245.03 Declaration and Payment of Tax at subsection D so as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent earned income tax for the year 2021. Bill Number 887. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article VII Business Related Taxes, Chapter 246 Home Rule Tax, Section 246.03 Declaration and Payment of Tax at subsection D so as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent home rule tax for the year 2021. Bill Number 888. Resolution authorizing the fee schedule for 2021 pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code. Bill Number 889. Resolution authorizing all city departments in conjunction with the Department of Finance to enter into facilities usage agreements for the purpose of permitting groups and individuals to rent city-owned facilities for recreational and community-focused activities during the 2021 calendar year. The city shall not charge more than $10,000 per rental agreement. And Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill Number 890. Resolution further amending Resolution 863 of 2018, effective January of 2019, as amended and titled, Resolution adopting and approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by increasing Community Development Block Grant line items by $3,112,342 to reflect the allocation of Federal Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act funding and authorizing a subsequent agreement. And Bill Number 891. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with agencies to provide emergency shelter services, street outreach services, rental assistance, and housing relocation and stabilization services and/or data collection activities as associated with the 2020 Emergency Solutions Grant Funds at a cost not to exceed $1,216,133 and the 2020 Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Funds at a cost not to exceed $1,140,292. That concludes the reading of the legislation up for introduction by Pittsburgh City Council. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Monday, November 9th, 2020. We have a meeting announcement. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. All meetings will be livestreamed on the City Channel's YouTube channel. Would the clerk please call the roof?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Griggs.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
There.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith present.
Here.
Eight members present.
Whoa.
As we join from our remote locations, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. And I'd like to remind everyone, and thank you to the mayor for giving us this reminder, that this week, Wednesday, is Veterans Day, so a moment of silence also for all of our veterans. The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. In accordance with our Home Rule Charter, our first order of business will be Mayor William Paduto's 2021 Budget Address. Mayor Paduto?
Good morning and thank you, Council President Kail Smith, Finance Chairman Lavelle, and all members of City Council. It's my honor to remind you that 2020 is almost over. Do you remember how things were when I presented the budget last year? We are still rebounding strongly for Act 47 Oversight. Our workers were finally getting long overdue raises. We had $120 million in our fund balance. And after years of hard work and discipline by my administration and you, City Council, our financial picture was good. Then, the global pandemic happened, as did our reckoning with the systemic racism long experienced by Black and Brown members of our community. Neither of these world-shattering challenges is resolved, and we continue to face them. Still, we responded as Pittsburghers always do. We made tough decisions to stop public events, closed pools, senior centers and rec centers, but still watched as our coworkers and neighbors lost their livelihoods and too often their lives. Our tax revenues cratered, and there is still no clear path forward to replace them. We listened to the pain expressed by neighbors who have been threatened by exclusionary and inequitable systems for generations. And we proudly declared together that Black Lives Matter. It has been one crisis after another these past seven years. Affordable housing, Act 47, spikes in violent crime, historic landside sinkholes and damaged infrastructure due to unprecedented rainfall from climate change, lead in our water system, the Tree of Life massacre, racial disparities, and now the global pandemic. Our vulnerabilities were exposed but taken head-on. Here in Pittsburgh, we saw resilience in neighbors helping neighbors and taking care of one another. We saw the bravery of our frontline workers, refuse and recycling workers, medics, firefighters, police officers, bus drivers, healthcare workers, grocery store workers who risked their own health to ensure Pittsburghers had what they needed. We froze hiring. We avoided layoffs and we provided continuous city operations despite our socially-distanced and masked world. We lost five city workers to deaths this year. And COVID-19 took the lives of more than 1.2 million people in the United States. We're currently in the third wave, with more than 1 million cases in the last 10 days alone. I will pause now for a moment of reflection in their memory. After COVID-19 hit in March, the murders of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor came to the forefront in the spring. Our streets have been filled with protests and marches ever since. We continue to wrestle with these issues, and I acknowledge that we, as a city government, have made some mistakes, which I strongly believe we have learned from. My sincere thanks goes to the recommendations made by the Community Task Force for Police Reform, which we are working to implement. Despite all of this, we kept our resolve. During one of the most difficult years in American history, I'm here to tell you that with your help and that of Pittsburgh's residents, we're going to have to do it all over again in 2021. But it is my hope that we will emerge from next year even stronger. The $590 million operating budget that I am proposing today does not include tax increases and works to avoid layoffs and furloughs of personnel for as long as possible. The financial responsibility we showed together the last seven years by building up the $120 million fund balance we had at the start of this year has helped us to avoid pain so far. But now, the cupboard is bare. As both Republican and Democratic mayors nationwide have urged, with the support of economists and Wall Street, it is absolutely necessary for Congress to provide cities on the front lines of this pandemic with economic relief. In the meantime, we are doing our part to implement cuts across all city departments, and non-union employees will not receive cost-of-living adjustments to their pay in 2021. The vast majority of vacant positions are also being eliminated from the 2021 budget citywide, starting January 1. It should never have to come to this, and it breaks my heart to say. But if we do not get aid from Washington, it will require the city to make $25.6 million in additional personnel cuts starting July 1, which is approximately the jobs of 634 city employees. This will be the most difficult budget City Council has faced since 2003. When it used revenues that didn't exist and fake spending projections to pass a plan that looked balanced, but instead took us to the brink of bankruptcy. We cannot repeat those mistakes again this year, just to avoid making hard decisions. I am confident with the steady leadership of Council President Kail Smith, President Pro Tem Burgess, and Finance Chair Lavelle. We will get through this responsibly. During the year, we will additionally work with mayors across Pennsylvania to push the legislature to reform our outdated tax structure and give municipalities greater power to tax progressively and thoughtfully and tailor their budgets to their needs. More than ever, we will need our nonprofit partners to fund initiatives to move Pittsburgh forward and for the legislature to reform the state's nonprofit tax structure. Just as we have worked together to enact meaningful, new proactive policies and programs to lessen the effects of social disparity, we must do the same when examining options of how we finance our city. For the past five years, we have built a resiliency lens into all of our decision-making. This filter is guided by the principle of P4: People, Planet, Place, and Performance. As our Gender Equity Report has proven, both gender and racial disparity is real in Pittsburgh. We must place this same lens over the way the state allows us to collect revenue. As you know, in Pennsylvania, taxes are regulated and are authorized by state government, not local government. During this crisis, we have witnessed firsthand that our present revenue is not only unsustainable, but is equally inequitable. Furthermore, it does not represent the economic reality nor the present demographics of Pittsburgh today. To be certain, we cannot build a vibrant city for all until all are part of providing the needed resources fairly, equally, together. In addition to this horrible year for our economy and our public health, we faced a reckoning with the racial and economic disparities impacting many of our neighbors. My proposed budget includes shifting some funding and responsibilities from the Pittsburgh Police to the New Health Safety and Violence Prevention Initiative, which will house both the Office of Community Health and Safety and the Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention. This will allow police to focus on their core function of keeping neighborhoods safe from crime. It will mean full-time funding for Public Safety's Group Violence Intervention Program for the very first time. We are not defunding the police, but are reinvesting in our communities. Due to hard work from Budget Director Kevin Paulus, Finance Director Douglas Anderson, and the entire OMB and Finance staffs, the 2021 budget will still invest in city facilities and infrastructure to keep our recovery going and quality of life in place with a commitment to equity for all. Government cannot just stop working. So we will push forward with the improvements residents deserve. Put a different way, this budget represents a city that works. While the federal government may have failed us in 2020, the Pittsburgh of 2021 and beyond is one that will not let its residents down. 311 is logging and responding to calls. DPW is improving your playgrounds and using smart technology to improve snow removal. Domey is improving sidewalks, streets, and handicap ramps. And building permits for PLI and planning have finally moved online. This year, we upgraded 21 courts, upgraded 35 parks, upgraded seven playgrounds, received 1.5 million in grants for parks, senior centers, and rec centers. And next year, the city will invest a total of $125 million into capital projects, including park investments at Deer Pit, Bud Hammer, Enright, Arsenal, Emerald View, Sheridan, and Canard, Strip District Rail Banking, and the Allegheny Green Boulevard, funding for the Warrington, Jefferson, Robert E. Williams Rec Centers, as well as the Brighton Heights Senior Center, a new spray park in Chartier City, continued record funding for landslide repairs, including El Paso Street, Riverview Park, and Parkwood Road, funding for EMS diesel exhaust systems, Fire Station 19 and Stevens School improvements, $4 million for the first phase of turning all of our streetlights to LEDs. We'll also be spending $17 million to repave 65 miles of streets. Services like these are the meat and potatoes of government. In Pittsburgh, we're also digging deep to give you something more. This is a time nationally where we are having critical and important but hard conversations about what some of our most vulnerable communities need. This includes Black and Brown communities, immigrant and refugee communities, veterans, LGBTQIA+ communities, those experiencing housing instability, and those suffering from addiction and mental health issues. In Pittsburgh, we are continuing to prioritize equity, which means we are building up communities that haven't always had the same opportunities, access, or protection. Through the leadership of officials, including Chief Equity Officer Majestic Lane, Assistant Chief of Staff Lindsay Powell, and many others across the city and its affiliated agencies, we have committed more than $10 million to the URA next year, double the funding of this year, to invest in affordable housing, avenues of hope, and an equitable recovery plan from COVID-19 in addition to the annual $10 million for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We've leveraged more than $67 million in additional housing aid, helped Pittsburghers purchase their first homes, added additional affordable rental units, and helped longtime homeowners stay in their homes and communities. We approved paid sick leave, which will go into full effect starting January 1. We received a record level of 9% low-income tax credits for additional affordable housing. We implemented a guaranteed basic income pilot to help those living in poverty with direct payments planned for early 2021 in conjunction with the OnePGH investment strategy. We've adopted the Avenues of Hope Initiative with the URA and Councilmen Burgess and Lavelle to invest in seven historically diverse business districts. We've adopted the GARE Racial Equity Toolkit in training to ensure that budget decisions at the department level are made through an equity lens. And we approved $23 million in contracts to minority and women-owned businesses. We've adopted Financial Empowerment Centers that have helped 557 people save almost of a third of a million dollars. We created the LGBTQIA Commission, the Gender Equity Commission, and soon a Racial Equity Commission. We've adopted an award-winning Rectitech Program with city parks, distributed 46,000 free books to 4,000 children through the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. Equity extends to our response to COVID as well. Work included city parks, making sure that our most vulnerable neighbors, youth, and older adults had access to meals in the first 10 days. Served over 2,000 meals, and over a quarter of a million meals have been served in total now. Small business grants from the URA and temporary outdoor dining streeteries were permits given to 68 restaurants from Domey, issuing more than $12 million. issuing more than $12 million in federal funds to organizations supporting residents, including the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank, the Women's Shelter of Greater Pittsburgh, and Casa San Jose, translating emergency materials and welcoming Pittsburgh's Quiet Care Campaign for newcomers, adopting a cash assistance program that helped distribute a half a million dollars in private national philanthropic funding to residents who are not eligible for federal stimulus because of their immigration status, and providing nearly 900 people with rental and mortgage assistance through the URA. We also kept our eyes on the long-term stability of our planet. Through the leadership of Chief Sustainability Officer Grant Irvin, Chief Resiliency Planner Rebecca Kiernan and their team, we have joined a global network to implement sustainable public procurement policies, adopted a net-zero building policy, became only the second U.S. city to adopt the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, and joined with our brothers and sisters from 11 other cities worldwide to divest from fossil fuels. Further, through the leadership of a new PWSA Board, Director Will Pickering and Deputy Executive Director Jennifer Persuti, PWSA has aggressively tackled the lead levels in our water, replacing 8,000 public lead lines and 5,000 private lines in this year pushed lead levels to over 20-year lows below federal warning levels. PWSA also announced plans for an innovative citywide green infrastructure stormwater management initiative to further protect our water. Finally, Pittsburgh just played a major role in the historic presidential election, placing Joe Biden and Kamala Harris into the White House. The incoming administration has made commitments to providing financial assistance to cities and investments to infrastructure. We need this funding to come in the first quarter of the year to allow us to present a full 2021 budget that does not include 634 job losses. We have a lot to be proud of, but so much more to do. Here's to the end of 2020 and working together in 2021 to build a pathway back to better days for all. Thank you, Council President and City Council. We look forward to working with you together to build a better Pittsburgh for all.
Thank you, Karen Paduta. Council's budget hearings will begin next Wednesday, November 18th at 10:00 a.m. Our next order of business is proclamations. We have one proclamation to be read into the record from Councilman Kraus.
Madam President, may I please have that read in its entirety? And there's one correction. I had asked that all board members of the Carnegie Library be listed as primary sponsors, so that would include Councilwoman Gross, Councilwoman Strasburger, and Councilman Lavelle as primary sponsors as well. Thank you.
And myself.
Oh, and you, of course. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents: Whereas Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh, Carnegie Museums of Pittsburgh, and the Pittsburgh Symphony Orchestra will begin celebrating their 125th anniversaries of sharing knowledge, art, and music with the Pittsburgh community. And whereas on November 5th, 1895, philanthropist Andrew Carnegie dedicated the building that housed Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh, Main Library, Carnegie Museum of Art, Carnegie Museum of Natural History, and Carnegie Music Hall. And whereas Mr. Carnegie was inspired by his own history to use his wealth to build laboratories that were free to the people to make knowledge and learning accessible to everyone. And whereas Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh's Main Library opened with approximately 16,000 items and now holds more than 975,000 items. In the library's first year, 109,750 people visited and 116,841 items circulated. In 2019, usage has grown across all 19 locations to include 2.7 million people and 3.9 million items circulating. And whereas Andrew Carnegie gifted his museums to Pittsburgh so that all people could explore the world through the wonders of art and science. And whereas Carnegie Museums of Pittsburgh has since grown to include four museums, adding the Carnegie Science Center and the Andy Warhol Museum to its collection of world-class museums. And whereas Mr. Carnegie's vision for Carnegie Museum of Pittsburgh is alive and well 125 years later and continues to transform lives through a greatly expanded collection of experiences that reach more than 1.5 million people a year. And whereas the vision of Andrew Carnegie that the Pittsburgh Orchestra should take a permanent place among the great symphonic organizations of the country, when a few cities had won, came to fruition with the opening of the Carnegie Music Hall, which became the first home of the Pittsburgh Symphony Orchestra. Whereas the multi-Grammy award-winning Pittsburgh Symphony Orchestra is one of the world's great orchestras with a 125-year history of engaging the finest conductors and musicians and a deep commitment to Pittsburgh and its people through its concerts, recordings, radio and television broadcasts, and community engagement. And whereas the joy of hearing symphonic music has enhanced their lives and been a source of civic pride since the orchestra's founding and for the many generations that have followed. And whereas after 125 years, these three community organizations continue to educate and inspire the people of Pittsburgh. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby congratulate Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh, Carnegie Museum of Pittsburgh, and the Pittsburgh Symphony Orchestra on celebrating 125 years and looks forward to the activities planned for the year-long celebration of the milestone. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, November 9th, 2020 as Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh, Carnegie Museums of Pittsburgh, and the Pittsburgh Symphony Orchestra Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
We have a motion to approve in a second.
Motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our motion is approved. Councilman Kraus, do you have anything to say?
You know, I think everyone here clearly understands my heartfelt appreciation and dedication to the Carnegie Library, the museums, and our symphony in the city. They elevate us, and they enrich us, and they give us a sense of place and purpose and history. And all the wonderful immeasurables that make a city sociable and rich are the way we socialize as people. My sincere appreciation and dedication of the Carnegie Library system and what it does to enrich us, I can't fully express the most visited attraction in Allegheny County. Regardless, is the Carnegie Library system. And it fills a very deep need for research and education, expression, entertainment, and socialization that we otherwise would not have if we did not have that system here. And so my most deep and sincere appreciation to all members that helped to serve and enrich the system that serves us so very well, and a sincere congratulation on the 125th anniversary. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Okay, that moves us on to our next order of business, which is public comment.
No, madam.
We have another proc in a will of council.
I apologize, I don't see that. Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Rockhill presents Bill Number 893. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Dan McKeever and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh is hereby declare Wednesday, November 11th, 2020 Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Sorry, do you want me to second? Go ahead.
The second one is a will of council.
Okay, so let's approve the first one. Motion to approve in a second?
Submerged.
Second.
Any discussion? Proclamations approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. Now the will of council. I apologize.
Madam President, may I also please have this read in its entirety?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, whereas more than 160 million Americans fulfilled their constitutionally protected civic duty of casting their vote for the 46th President of the United States and for their local elected representatives during the general election held on November 3rd of 2020. And whereas the record turnout unseen in more than a century brought nearly two-thirds of the eligible voting population to the cast a ballot. And whereas because of unprecedented actions by the sitting president, this election's integrity was and continues to be under threat through the use of misinformation, encouragement of malicious threats and actions, and misuse of the judicial system to undermine it. And whereas the election takes place through the tireless efforts of local boards of election, which ensure that every single eligible voter is able to vote and that every single eligible vote is counted. And whereas Allegheny County Board of Elections recruited, trained, and prepared nearly 7,000 poll workers in anticipation of this election in order to ensure that no persons were disenfranchised at any of the county's 1,300 voting precincts. And whereas in the midst of a pandemic that has claimed the lives of more than 235,000 people in the United States, thousands of poll workers volunteered to spend a long and demanding day at the polls in Allegheny County and put themselves at risk of harassment, intimidation, and infection as an expression of civic duty. And whereas for no personal gain other than to satisfy a civic need, poll workers and ballot counters volunteer to serve as insurers of our democracy, protecting our legacy of free, fair, and open elections and their critical role is the basis of a system we rightfully trust to carry out the accurate wishes of the electorate. And whereas poll workers and ballot counters act selflessly to progress the foundation of our treasured democracy at grandiose vision of the peaceful determination of the leaders that is realized in church for years, elementary school auditoriums, and residential barrages all throughout our region and our nation. And now be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby offers sincere gratitude to the poll workers, the ballot counters, and the election clerks who volunteer to allow this election to proceed. The Council also honors and acknowledges the commitment of the Allegheny Board of Elections and the individuals who, despite the difficulty of the situation, rose to the challenge and served to protect our rights as Americans. And be it further resolved that a copy of this will of council is sent with sincere recognition to the Allegheny County Board of Elections in honor of a successful administration of an election in the center of the national spotlight.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve in a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very brief discussion, if I may. I cannot thank the dedicated people that, I believe the number was listed in here, that came out by the hundreds and hundreds to assist and volunteer in the processing of this election. I don't know that I have missed a year, an election year that I have not visited poll workers to thank them for their diligence and their duty and their civic mindedness. And what I was surprised to see this year is how many of them were not able to be there because of their age or their perhaps disability or fear of being sick, and how many young people, and I do mean young people, stepped in and took over and defended our democracy and put themselves at risk and spent the day and further on ensuring that there was a fair and accurate count, even though there are still continuing to be threats of violence, physical violence, gun violence, intimidation, and a systemic and organized propaganda campaign to argue that somehow these dedicated civic-minded volunteers would somehow attempt to throw an election one way or another specifically for a candidate. And I am absolutely appalled that the leader of the free world would cast this kind of suspicion and doubt on dedicated public servants that volunteer to ensure a free, fair electorate and to preserve our democracy. So I asked Bob and Brasha if they would write this for our office so that we could put this out, send it over to the Board of Elections, and let them know in a very little way how much we appreciate the efforts that they put forward through this and continue to put forward through this election season. And I thank all members for being a part of this and for supporting this as well. Thank you.
Any other members? See, now we'll now move on to our next order of business, which is public comment. Thank you, Councilman Kraus. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of councils state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberations, which are or may be before city council. May we have this first speaker, please, and I have Ikahana How Makina.
Greetings of peace, light, and love. My title is Ikahana How Makina, the Grand Inca of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. I would like to speak today in regards to our rights, which is at the forefront and the foundation of America according to the Great Law of Peace. Our people have the right to maintain, strengthen our distinctive and cultural relationship with our land, also our territories and our resources. To uphold, you have the duty to uphold your responsibility to allow us to preserve, protect these lands for future generations. Our people have the right, unlimited access to our land and territories, to not be forced to assimilate into a system in which we never belonged. Our people have the right to control and develop our territories and our lands without being stopped and forced to assimilate. Everything goes back to stop and assimilate into a system that was never meant for us. We have our distinctive communities and distinctive laws that govern us according to the Great Law of Peace. We have the right to peace and security in our own land. We will and shall be acknowledged and recognized for who we are. We have the right to maintain and control our own community. And we are urging city council members, local, federal, state, we continue to do the work on all of those fronts, on all of those platforms to make sure we are separate and distinctive. And I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Have a good day. Our next speaker is Kota Akibe. Our next speaker is Koda Akibe.
Greetings, greetings. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, good morning. Go ahead.
Greetings. I am Koda Akibe, Inca of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And I'd like to remind the city council members and as well as all citizens and people here in America of a maximet of law that's been in place for a while and it's states, ignorance of the law excuses no one, or ignorance of the law is no excuse. And our goal over these, uh, council meetings that we're going to be on, I'm going to be reciting and reading from those bodies of law to include the Constitution, uh, some of the Great Law of Peace, the American Declaration of Rights of Indigenous Peoples, and the United Nations. And I'd like to recall the commitments that were made at the, uh, Third Planetary Session held on June fifteenth of twenty sixteen. And we must all bear in mind and recognize that it is important for our people to participate um, in the process of the legislations and things that you guys may end up passing that may affect our rights. And we must put things in place within the law to protect our rights as they already are, but even more enforcement. And we must take into account the significant contribution that our people of the Americas have made to humanity as a whole. And recognizing that the rights of our people are both essential and of historical significance to the present and future of the Americas. So we must reaffirm that our people are original and diverse societies with our own identities that constitute an integral part of who we are as a people. And there's a lot of concern that our people as we have and continue to suffer from historic injustices as a result of, among other things, our colonization, dispossession of our lands, territories, and resources, thus preventing our people from exercising, in particular, our right to develop as a people in accordance with our own needs and interests. And there is a great concern for us to come to the table and speak about these things so we can chew through it, so we can remove the ignorance that everybody took an oath that they wouldn't be ignorant of when they signed on to the positions of city council and other members and spots in the government and/or agencies thereof. So I will yield the rest of my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day. And having no further speakers, that moves us on to our next order of business, which is presentation of papers. Uh, Councilman, uh, Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilman Cockhill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilman Cockhill presents Bill number eight seventy-two. Resolution providing for a reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase of the Swindle Bridge project, construction project, and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs not to exceed seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars reimbursable at ninety-five percent. And the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed one thousand five hundred dollars. Bill number eight seventy-three. Resolution granting unto high six associates LP. Their successors then assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a two, two new projecting signs at one forty-six Sixth Street in the second ward, sixth council district.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Any papers, Madam President?
Thank you. Good morning, Councilwoman. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Thank you.
Councilman Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number eight seventy-four. Resolution providing for further renewal by the Council of the City of a declaration of disaster emergency ratified by council on March seventeenth, twenty twenty to extend the effectiveness of the declaration for thirty days. Additional days thereby making the declaration effective until December tenth, twenty twenty in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus. Bill number eight seventy-five. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the chief equity officer to enter into an agreement with the American Association of University Women in order to conduct a work-smart training program as part of a pay equity initiative designed to reduce the gender pay gap in Pittsburgh and further providing for the expenditures under the terms of said agreement at a cost not to exceed thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Bill number eight seventy-six. Resolution amending resolution six thirty-five, which authorized the mayor and chief equity officer to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract between the city and the government alliance on race and equity in order to receive training and develop a racial equity toolkit in order to extend the contract for an additional year and add technical assistance for building and implementing a racial equity toolkit and developing in, uh, in equity lens for each department's budgeting process at a total cost not to exceed sixty-one thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars, subject to appropriation. Bill number eight seventy-seven. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the chief equity officer to enter into an agreement with ninth party, nth party, in order to collect and provide de- aggregated data related to a public entity initiative designed to reduce the gender pay gap in Pittsburgh and further providing for the expenditures under the term of said agreement at a cost not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Bill number eight seventy-eight. Resolution making appropriations to pay the expenses of conducting the public's business of the city and for meeting the debt charges thereof for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty-one. Bill number eight seventy-nine. Resolution fixing the number of officers and employees of the city for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year and the rate of compensation thereof and setting maximum levels for designated positions. Bill number eight eighty. Resolution adopting and approving the twenty twenty-one capital budget and the twenty twenty-one CBPG program and the twenty twenty-one through the twenty twenty-six capital improvement program. Bill number eight eighty-one. Resolution providing for the letting of contracts and for the use of existing contracts for the purchase of materials, supplies, and equipment for the city departments and maintenance, repair, rental, and/or leasing rehabilitation, renovation, inspection, or servicing of city buildings and facilities and for any miscellaneous services in and for any city departments and providing for the payment of the cost thereof for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. Bill number eight eighty-two. Resolution authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to participate in applicable corporate purchasing agreements for goods, materials, equipment, supplies, services, professional services, or contract construction as authorized by the Commonwealth Procurement Code and the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Corporation Law for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. Bill number eight eighty-three. Resolution authorizing city council to approve intra-departmental transfers throughout the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. Bill number eight eighty-four. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal Article Nine Property Taxes, Chapter two sixty-three. Real property tax and exemption, Section two sixty-three oh one, levying rates on lands and buildings by fixing the rate of taxation for twenty twenty-one. Bill number eight eighty-five. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal Article Nine Property Taxes, Chapter two sixty-three. Real property tax and exemption, Section two sixty-three oh two. Payment options, discount, and delinquencies penalties. So as to set the payment discount and delinquent dates for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. Bill number eight eighty-six. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal Article Seven Business Related Taxes, Chapter two forty-five. Earned income tax, Section two forty-five oh three. Declaration and payment of taxes subsection D. So as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent earned income tax for the year twenty twenty-one. Bill number eight eighty-seven. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal Article Seven Business Related Taxes, Chapter two forty-six. Home rule tax, Section two forty-six oh three. Declaration and payment of taxes subsection D. So as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent home rule tax for the year twenty twenty-one. Bill number eight eighty-eight. Resolution authorizing the fee schedule for twenty twenty-one pursuant to Chapter one seventy of the city code. Bill number eight eighty-nine. Resolution authorizing all city departments in conjunction with the Department of Finance to enter into facilities usage agreements for the purpose of permitting groups and individuals to rent city-owned facilities for recreational and community-focused activities during the twenty twenty-one calendar year. The city shall not charge more than ten thousand dollars per rental agreement.
Thank you. And Councilman, you have a waiver?
Yes, um, motion to waive the rules of council so that Bill eight seventy-four can be hailed, um, heard under final action today.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
In, in the opposed? The bill will appear today and then motions and resolutions.
Madam President?
Yes.
I apologize. I have an eleven o'clock I need to get to. I'd like to cast aye votes for all remaining bills.
Under it.
Thank you, Councilman. Have a good day. Thank you. Have a good day. Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning. And then we have, uh, Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management, Madam Clerk.
Um, have, we have, uh, Councilman Wilson to present for her. She don't have any new papers.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Had no new papers. Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President?
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number eight ninety. Resolution for the amending resolution number eight sixty-three of twenty eighteen, effective January first, twenty nineteen, as amended, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty Nineteen Capital Budget, the Twenty Nineteen CBPG, and the Twenty Nineteen through Twenty Twenty Four Capital Improvement Program by increasing community development block grant line item by three million one hundred and twelve thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars to reflect the allocation of federal coronavirus aid relief and economic security. A Act funding and authorizing a subsequent agreement or agreements. Bill number eight ninety-one. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with agencies to provide emergency shelter services, street outreach services, rental assistance, and housing relocation and stabilization services and/or data collection activities as associated with the twenty twenty Emergency Solution Grant funds at a cost not to exceed one million two hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty twenty housing opportunities for persons with AIDS fund at a cost not to exceed one million one hundred and forty thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Thank you. And then myself, Chair of, uh, Hearings. I have no bills. Uh, we'll now move on to unfinished business. Is there any further unfinished business before council? Seeing then, our next order of business is reports of committee for final action. Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President?
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number eight sixty-seven. Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for November second, twenty twenty with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number eight twenty-three. Resolution providing for the issuing of a warrant in the total sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in favor of Saru Chatterjee, the law offices of Timothy P. O'Brien Esquire as final settlement and related to the actions filed in the Western District Court of Pennsylvania. Bill number eight forty-two. Resolution amending resolution seven thirty-seven of twenty nineteen. Authorizes director of finance to enter into an agreement with city source associates for groundskeeping and land maintenance services for properties owned by the three taxing bodies by exercising the right to renew for one year and an additional cost of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Bill number eight forty-three. Resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter two ten of the city code, the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget to accept a donation from the Ford Motor Company of four ninety-two, four eighty Ford-faced masks valued at two hundred one thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars and eighty cents to be distributed to city employees. Bill number eight forty-six. Ordinance amending a supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title One Administrative Article Eleven, Human Resources, Chapter one ninety-seven Code of Conduct, one ninety-seven oh seven Offering Soliciting or Accepting Gifts to Define Procedures for the Presentations of Gifts to Public Officials by Foreign or Domestic Dignitaries.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of what I, when the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Yeah, I'll call you when I can, just a few minutes.
Thanks.
Aye. You call, Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
This is Kale Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Uh, Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number eight sixty-eight. Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for November second, twenty twenty with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number eight forty-four. Resolution authorizing the Citizen Police Review Board to enter into an agreement with the Densus Group for Professional Services to assist the independent citizen police review board in its review of community police interactions during protests in Pittsburgh for the period May thirtieth, twenty twenty through June first, twenty twenty. Said agreement or contract shall not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for twenty twenty subject to the annual allocations by city council.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
Yes, uh, I just wanted to thank Councilman Kraus for the conversation I had, he had set up between myself and, uh, Beth Pittinger. Think there's been like a disconnect or distrust between the CPRB and the Pittsburgh Police. And I feel a lot more comfortable. I mean, we, we must have talked for probably an hour or so. And she's committed to, you know, pointing out all that has gone right with the Pittsburgh Police Department as well as findings that may come up as things that have gone wrong, so. Um, and I do find her role is going to be very critical. The CPRB's role is going to be critical in the years to come. So I cannot support it today just because I feel like we know what went wrong with that situation. But, um, in no way is that a vote of, um, non-confidence for the CPRB. But, uh, but today I'll be voting no, um, but I do again want to thank Councilman Kraus for the dialogue and the conversation with Ms. Pittinger and look forward to working with her as, as we move on. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, yes, I'd like to thank you. I'd like to just clarify my vote as well. Um, I voted no on the last time that the Densus Group came up. Um, and while I understand that it's back up again because there was an RFP process which had not occurred the first time. Um, and while I respect the CPRB and I look forward to working with them and I look forward to their having expanded powers, um, there was just a significant amount of questions about this firm specifically. And it gives an impression that it is about, uh, training cities um, to do, and, and nations even, I think it's an international firm, to, um, use violence against their citizens. So there's a kind of double presentation, right? CPRB is, is saying that it is going to evaluate the use of force. Um, but I think there's this, I have discomfort um, with the way the firm presents itself. Um, and I, I'm just not comfortable voting for it and I, and I question its use here and I'll be following um, this contract, um, to see how CPB, CPRB uses it. Um, we want CPRB to investigate um, and, uh, the claims that citizens made about these events and about future events um, and make sure that they are giving the citizens, I think, their due course in, in these investigations. Um, so I'll be, could, you know, continuing to vote no today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Seeing none, we'll now move on for a final vote. The, uh, bills are now ready for final chat, final action. All in favor of the passage of what I, when the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Cockhill?
No.
Ms. Gross? Ms. Gross?
No.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle? Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes seven, knows two.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Councilman Anthony, Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 869. I'm sorry, yeah, 869, Report of the Committee on Public Works for November 2, 2020, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 834, Resolution Granting Unto Walnut Street Properties Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense to Install a New Projecting Sign at 5505 Walnut Street in the Seventh Ward, Eighth Council District of the City.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess? Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, knows zero.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Thank you. Uh, Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President?
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 817, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for November 2, 2020, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 684, Resolution Approving a New Institutional Master Plan under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zone in Article 2, Chapter 905, Section 90503D and Article 7 for West Penn Hospital Institutional Master Plan dated August 17, 2020 on Property Zone EMI Educational Medical Institution District, Eighth Ward, Council District Number 7.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, knows zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And now we'll move on to our final committee of the day is Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Councilwoman?
Madam Clerk, sorry.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 871, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for November 2, 2020, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 835, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title and Interest, if any, in and to the Following Publicly-Owned Properties in the 10th Ward of the City designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County, located on the North Side of Rosetta Street, west of Nor Pacific and Block 50K Lots 172 and 173, located on the South Side of Broad Street between North Midvale Avenue and North Wyandale Street, Council District Number 9. Bill Number 836, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title and Interest, if any, in and to the Following Publicly-Owned Properties in the 5th Ward of the City designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County as Blocks 27B Lots 20352, located on the South Side of Anaheim Street, east of Camp Street and 821 Shawnee Street, Council District Number 6. Bill Number 837, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title and Interest, if any, in and to the Following Publicly-Owned Properties in the 12th Ward of the City designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County, located on the West Side of Joseph Street between Regis Way and Thompson Street and on the East Side of the Rapid Inn Way between Regis Way and Thompson Street, respectively, Council District 9.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final passage. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, knows zero.
Bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And I have some meeting announcements. It moves us on to motions and resolutions. But first, uh, do you want to take Councilman Lavelle's bill? Uh, 874, Councilman Lavelle?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Um, can we have a, uh, this, Madam Clerk, do you want to read the bill again?
Yes. Bill 874, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of the City of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency ratified by Council on March 17, 2020, to Extend the Effectiveness of the Declaration for 30 days, additional days thereby making the Declaration effective until December 10, 2020, in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus.
Thank you. And, uh, uh, all in favor of the passage of the bill?
Aye.
Pardon me?
Need a roll call.
Yeah. Do we have a?
Yeah, we need a motion in a second and then we need to take a roll call for that.
I've been going back and forth with Madam Clerk all day trying to figure out what I'm supposed to do here. Okay, so we have a motion to approve in, in a second.
So moved?
Second.
And can we have a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President. Eyes nine, knows zero.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes is, is passed. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And thank you, Councilman Lavelle. Council will meet on, uh, tomorrow, Tuesday, November 10th at 10:00 a.m. with their standing committees meeting. To register to speak, please call the Clerk's Office at 412-255-2138 by 9:00 a.m., November 10th. Also, Tuesday, November 10th at 1:30 p.m., Council will hold its capable cast public hearings on Bill 774, 775 and 776 as they relate to historic designations of the Gallagher-Kiefer House, the Heron Hill Pumping Station and St. John V. N. Church. To register for this hearing, please contact the Clerk's Office. For these hearings, please contact the Clerk's Office uh, by 11:30 a.m. on November 10th. And these meetings will be chaired by Councilman Wilson because they fall under his committee. There's so many. You may, um, also submit comments for these meetings by emailing thecityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Please note that written comments will not be read during the meeting. Also, next Tuesday, November 17th at 12:00 noon, there will be an overview of policy discussion for the two, for the 2021 City Council, uh, budget. Again, budget hearings will begin next Wednesday, the 18th, at 1:30 p.m. All budget hearings will be held virtually and will be live streamed on the City Channel's YouTube channel. Is there anything from members? Seeing nothing from members, I just want to remind folks again that Veterans Day is this Wednesday. Um, please do something to thank a veteran if you can, uh, and at least keep them in your thoughts and our gratitude to all of our veterans. I also, including my own children and grandchildren. I don't know if Councilman, Madam Clerk, did we schedule Councilman O'Connor's, um, post agenda for this week?
Uh, yes, Madam President, may I jump in? Sorry.
Yes, please. I just, I didn't know if you were still on. I didn't want to, um, not announce it if it's this week.
Yeah, uh, it, it's scheduled and we talked, uh, working with you in your office. Um, it's going to still be Thursday. We're going to move it to 9:30 opposed to 10:00.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. And that, uh, post agenda is in regards to?
It's the mayor, I'm sorry, it's the mayor's task force, um, that just came out with a report. Was it two weeks ago or something? So we thought it'd be a good idea to get them in as quick as we, we possibly could, talk to the mayor's office. Everybody's fine with them coming in for a report as soon as possible.
Thank you, Councilman. And I just, and I just want to add, uh, I want to thank the mayor for his budget address day. I want to thank his team and our team for working together, um, on the budget. I think Councilman Lavelle, um, Councilman Burgess and, um, Bill Urbannick and Mike Stradek on our side of the hall. But I also want to thank the mayor's side of the hall for everything that they've done to put together a very challenging budget. I think that this is, we all know that this is a very difficult and challenging time. And I think, um, I had a lot of hope after hearing the budget. So I think there were some good things that we heard. I just hope that we get the help that we need, uh, from Washington now. So with that said, um, can I have a motion to excuse the absent members? Approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.